Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to do is ask our council to consider some requests from our outside agencies. The city typically funds some outside functions and I invited those agencies or representatives from those agencies to the meeting today to speak to the council so we can bring them forward one at a time and then we'll move on to the internal city budgets.
Okay.
Auburn Beautification Commission, anybody here for them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the chairperson had her birthday today.
Yes.
Laurie?
Oh, no.
No?
You're not going to speak for -- okay.
Oh, you said A, B, C.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I'm on the committee, but I'm not the --
Since you're standing, why don't you go ahead, Connie?
Okay, I got my acronyms mixed up.
Okay.
So, I'm Connie Riley. I'm the executive director of the Bid, Auburn Downtown Business Improvement District. And I -- going around is a bit of information about our flower program that we've had with the city as a contract. And I'd like to say right from the get-go here that this needs to be a contract and not a year-to-year issue, and I'll explain why. This is the end of March, and normally if we had renewed the contract in 2013, I would have already ordered flowers and signed a contract with Auburn Irrigation. And the payment from part of 2013 would pay for the program up until June 30th. However, since there is no contract anymore, I haven't ordered any flowers or signed a contract with Auburn Irrigation, and that's because I don't know if we're going to have funding from July 1st of 2014 to finish paying for the flower program. And the watering and maintenance of the flowers is one of the most expensive parts of our contract with the city. I think it's been hard for people to understand why it has to be a contract, a two-year contract. So going forward, there should be a contract signed for the next two years, July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2015, and then the next year would be July of 2015 to June of 2016. That's the need for a contract, not just a yearly renewal of funding. We're dealing with live plants here, not ordering brochures, doing websites, all of those things which are great, but we can't invest in flowers in the beginning of the fiscal year and then have them die, not be able to afford to pay for all the watering. And the watering costs about $4,000 a month.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Counselor.
May I ask a question?
Please.
I thought it was on the agenda. Didn't we have this on the agenda a couple weeks ago, a month ago maybe, the bid?
It was on the agenda, but we pulled it. We were advised to pull it, and that's why we're here today.
All right. I was wondering if -- what happened?
What we had discussed was a extension of the current contract through the fiscal year, but there was the question of making a commitment to the funding out of the budget yet to be approved.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking that, Debbie. So what I have here is our -- what the bid contract costs, not only the $40,000 that has been our contract for the last six or eight years. Everything's listed, and right now it's going over by $4,243 that bid pays out of our regular budget. Therefore, it draws away from all our other activities. Our mission has many parts to it, and it's bid's feeling that Auburn has progressed so far and so positively from even, say, 10 years ago. The look of the city, the feeling, you know, people have invested so much money in new businesses. I brought with me the progress edition from the Citizen. There's a stack of them out on the table, if anyone missed that. It was so stuffed with positive things about Auburn, moving forward, investments. It's just a great issue. So over the years, I've had many communities and people that have said, even people from Skinny Atlas, which I thought was pretty neat, Auburn looks so great, and the flowers and the cleanliness of the streets just impress people. It makes them want to come back here, visit again, spend money. And one of the biggest things about this contract is Ryan Meyer is our beautification crew of one person. He is dedicated to the bid district. He cannot be pulled away to go to Hoops Park or any place else in the city to do anything. He's right here in downtown Auburn every day, cleaning up. And we take an average of 40 tons of trash. We deliver it to the landfill, all picked up by Ryan, and that street litter and, you know, edge-of-the-street litter, that's a lot of litter. And that's why downtown looks so nice. We've had a great working relationship with this contract, and we have a great working relationship with Mike Talbot and all of the staff and the crew. And we take our commitment to this city very seriously at bid. So everything we do has a very tangible effect. It's very viewable, and I think it's very important to keep this going. So if you're wondering what our bid budget is, the big budget, this year it is $2, $1 shy of $114,000. And that's from the tax assessment that we receive, much like a library tax or the fire department tax in, you know, an outside township. We have no fat in this budget. It's pretty self-explanatory. One of the reasons that this contract was started was when John Panko -- Panko worked for bid, he was part-time. And it was easy to see that he needed to be full-time to attend to all of the needs of downtown. So part of this, our contractual partnership that we have is half of Ryan's budget, half of Ryan's salary is paid by this contract. And also his health insurance, because if he didn't work full-time, he couldn't get health insurance, if you're wondering about that. None of us have a retirement plan. Back to the first page, our workers' comp increased significantly this year. We had an audit done by workers' comp in October, and they raised Ryan's comp coverage alone by $1,812, which put it up to $3,325 just to cover Ryan. And that's a huge expense for us to take on. So then I have attached to this a contract review from Mike Talbot. He's just saying, you know, again, we have a great working relationship. We help with the snow removal in the winter. Again, he points out that Ryan is downtown. He's all about downtown. And then I have the sample agreement contract that we did in 2011, signed by Mayor Quill and Paul Ringwood, our bid president. So am I explaining it so that people understand why this needs to be a contract and not a year-to-year deal?
Mayor?
Please.
I just wanted to clarify, when you were -- and you're explaining it beautifully. The gentleman that you have, Ryan, is taking the place of what the city would normally have to do.
Exactly.
So he's not a city employee. When you said he doesn't go to Hoops Park, that you're trying to tell us, explain that if we had -- our city staff is spread thin, and it would be neglected. And I have been downtown before you did this, and the flowers weren't looking so hot. Let's just say they were not getting the attention, and they're beautiful. They really are. The way the summers have been, even though we think it's raining all the time, they -- I've seen them out first thing in the morning watering and taking care of things, and it really does make a difference to how the appearance look, everything looks. Even the merchants and business owners, they don't really have the time to come out and do that kind of thing, even if there's something right near them. I do know, maybe because I've just seen how things have evolved, what you're up against. Just one question. I noticed you have Pango, an expense for Pango in your budget?
Yes, and that is -- we had some special events.
So you had to take, pay for Pango?
We -- I wanted to show that we have skin in the game for all these special events.
Sure.
And Pango fronted a lot of money for the kickoff to help the city get the Dunkin's brought up to date. Pango has put in a lot of money into this, as the city has also. So we did some of the paying of the kickoff things, and then we've done some signs and banners for Pango out of our budget. So that $1,287 is probably not anything that we would have to do again, although I can see us making some copies.
Sure.
Because I have a program proposed to promote Pango as soon as the weather breaks.
And that benefit only benefits the city, again.
Exactly.
That's a direct benefit for our parking program.
Yes.
That's expense that probably we, if we had, we would want to promote it ourselves, but that's really great that you're taking that time, the time and the attention to do it, because the program itself is, I think it's working out pretty well.
Yes, it's coming along. Again, it's a new learning curve for people, so.
Counselor Rizika.
Yes, Connie, last year we had, looking at extending the parking, and part of the intention with that was to cover some bid expenses, the band concerts, and all the other fun stuff that we have. And I think we asked you, or I asked you, if you could look at some plan to help with the parking situation of after-hours parking. We're paying for these lots. They don't get used until they're free. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. And since you're looking for money here on this, I mean, I thought we made it clear during budget time, but maybe it didn't, but it was talked about that all this revenue that we would possibly get from the extended parking hours, lot, open lots, things like that, was going to pay for the bid and the park, band concerts, and other issues. That was the intention of that activity. So if, in order to help you out, if maybe you could come up with some kind of proposed parking thing?
Okay, you do keep saying that to me. I didn't realize it was attached to this $40,000 contract.
Well, it's money that the city needs, right? So.
Parking is --
I know it's a tough issue.
-- age-old problem. It's not something that we're going to, or you're going to fix in a year.
Understood.
And I think it's very unfair to attach the solving of the parking problem.
Well, I'm not trying to attach it to you. What I'm trying to do is say--
To the contract, is what I'm saying.
No, I'm not doing that.
I thought you just did.
No, I'm just saying that this is what we did, looked at last year. That was what our intention was last year. There was no contract, we didn't, that was already thinking. That was what we intended to do with the monies for that increased parking.
Okay.
Counselor McCormick, you want to weigh in?
Before you -- I don't think it's right to put Connie on the spot about the city's parking issues and fun. The bid is, if I'm not mistaken, is supported by a tax that business owners pay.
True.
So to tie the downtown to our overall huge issue of parking fees and how they're managed isn't really part of what the bid is responsible to do. They're on a committee sometimes when we've looked at these things, and that's, Connie's probably been on 10 different committees, 10 times.
Sure, I believe so.
And she's very patient with all the parking issues. I think what they do is take away from the things that the city would normally have to do.
Understood.
And we would have to pay people to do this. I really don't think tying parking fees to the bid, great if we can afford to cover that, but I thought parking fees were to cover --
Well, that's why we did the extended parking fees. That was the intention, if you follow the discussion.
No, I thought, excuse me. I thought the parking fees were to cover the cost of the parking attendance, the meter readers, the whole, the parking garage, anything to do with parking itself alone, just parking.
Exactly, but it also was discussed that by adding the extended parking fees that that would pay for the, or help pay for the other, the good stuff.
Could I hit the city manager? Is that what we put the budget?
No, this is last year.
Counselor McCormick, I'll launch it away in, just real quick.
Thank you. I'd just like to put a little bit of background on this. You know, unfortunately, as fiscal times get tighter and tighter, we were talking about many things with the budget last year because there was a lot of requests by our commissions and councils to try to get extra funding, but as, like I say, revenues are very tight for the city at this stage of the game, trying to fund all these programs and try to do a little bit for everybody across the board. We did have discussions on trying to look at different revenue streams, toss at some of these expenses that we might be coming up with. So there was a lot of discussion at budget time on how we could try to split up the pot, so to speak.
Exactly.
We could try to get monies for everybody across the board, while still trying to maintain our services as, you know, our main services that people expect and feel they pay for, do pay for. So I think that there was a little bit of discussion at that time.
As I recall, Counselor, and I very well could be wrong, but council did have the opportunity to increase the parking hours last year. And the council, council did not have the appetite for that. While at the same time, I believe you're correct in that we asked to work with the bid to try to come up a little better parking, not necessarily, Connie, don't read into this, I'm not saying we looked into doing it weekends, nights, anything like that. That was shot down by council. But how we could do a little better job between the city council, city departments in bid is to make, parking's never glamorous, but at least we could put some lipstick on it.
Sure.
Okay? And I think, I think that's where Counselor Rizika is coming from, and our other two councils over here. Counselor Cuddy.
Just, yes, briefly on parking, I think that there may be some value in having a specific committee to address parking and comprehensively. I've been approached by business owners downtown that would like to really take a look at parking comprehensively, but that's a separate issue. I want to get back to the contract and ask Connie a few questions, or one question in particular. Now, you had mentioned that half of Mr. Meyer's pay is in the contract, the $20,000 contract?
It is.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, you know, I think that that really helps me understand this more as the labor that Mr. Meyer puts into the city. I have no idea.
[laughing]
This is not mine, is it? It's not mine. It's not mine, I don't have it. Here, let me just put that there, okay. Mr. Meyer is, basically what I'm saying is that we're not paying $20,000 for flowers. We're paying, like, for flowers, the watering, the maintenance. It's a packaged deal.
Right.
I think that should be clear to the people of Auburn, is that, you know, instead of paying a city employee, which obviously, you know, we, as Counselor McCormick had mentioned, we have a Department of Public Works that has, you know, been stretched to the max, and this is an opportunity, it's a great example of partnership between the city and partners within the community to really address the issues of the way our city looks as people come to visit, as business people come to consider Auburn as a place to set up their business, as families to bring their children downtown. I really think, you know, this has my full support, especially because we're getting a bigger bang for our buck, if you will, because we're able to work with the bid and get the necessary things that need to happen to make our downtown look as good as it does.
Thank you.
Counselor Rizika.
Connie, I believe, does not the bid have a tax base that they put down to the downtown district?
Yes, that's the second page.
Yes, that's what I was saying. Now, what's in your power to perhaps raise your rate?
It's the city.
Nothing.
Nothing? I mean, the city determines the bid rate?
Yes.
That's a separate, but that's not, that's separate from the property tax rate, I believe, right?
It's an extra tax.
It's on top of the property tax.
On top of the, so.
For certain properties within the boundaries of bid.
Correct. So perhaps that's, you know, that there's the opportunity for us to look at that, if it's not keeping up with your costs, which you're telling us it's not, then perhaps that bid tax needs to be increased.
Well, bid is a state-sanctioned entity.
Correct.
So it's not so much a city decision. It would have to be a state decision, and bids are very strictly monitored and run. So we don't have options of locally of increasing it.
I understand it. What I'm asking is maybe we look, do we have the power to raise the rate for bid tax?
Mr. Fusco?
I, I'm not certain. I'd have to research.
Well, I think this is a perfect, you know, opportunity to look at this, because if her costs are not being covered, and it's from the downtown district and the city's, that's what it was intended to fund it, I think this is where we need to look.
The city cannot raise the assessment. It's a --
No, it's not the assessment. I'm talking the bid tax. He's looking into it.
Which is the bid tax, assessment bid tax. They're the same thing.
Well, there's a rate, is there not?
There is a rate.
Okay. My question is, can we adjust the rate?
I don't think so. You'd have to talk to the state about that.
That's what he's going to do.
Okay.
I'll research that this week and have you an answer by Thursday.
Very good.
Counselor McCormick.
Even if we could raise it, downtown street maintenance is city responsibility. If I was a bid business and you wanted to raise my rate so that you could take care of the streets, I would think to myself, wait a minute, I've already paid the property taxes to do that, so let eliminate that from the bid and pay $65,000, $75,000 to an employee to do it. I think what Connie's done is tried to offset the problems that the city has staffing and maintaining streets by this, the solution of adding to the part-time position. They don't have to do this. This isn't part, really, of the bid's mission, really, as far as that goes.
Not to this extent, though. We've been doing it.
It's more, this is more to help the city take care of the streets, not to, I don't think it would warrant a tax increase if we could, and I don't think you can, to the downtown business owners. I really don't.
But at the same point, your same argument can be used to say, well, we shouldn't pay any bid taxes at all.
No, I'm not saying.
No, I'm just saying, because if, they could say, well, we're paying property taxes, these are the services we expect. However, because of the way the bid was brought into play, this was an additional adder, just particularly for the downtown business district. So if, the argument is that, and I'm making this bold assumption that we can adjust the rates of the bid tax.
Right.
If the bid tax can be adjusted to cover costs that they're, of the services that they are performing that impact the bid district, which by improving the bid, the business district, it enhances the business atmosphere. It's only going to help the business and the downtown. So rather than, you know, the entire burden is on the taxpayers, the city, the entire city is why there was a downtown bid tax, is, that's --
But that's not part of what it is.
Well, why do we have a bid tax, then?
Well, you should look into that.
I just did. I just told you. It's for the improvement of the downtown business district.
Mayor, with all due respect, we have other people that like to make presentations this morning. This is a conversation that needs to happen at budget deliberations when we actually get into placing --
Is that what this meeting is?
This, we have budget deliberations where we're actually going to be voting on yes, no, how we fund different programs. I think we're getting the information now on different stages of the budget.
Understood.
And I think we should have further debate when we start talking about the different budget line items, as I'm sure we're going to have.
Counselor Cuddy.
I agree with Counselor Camardo to an extent. I agree that really we should be listening to most, pretty much all of the budget presentations. I think the pressing issue with Ms. Riley is the fact that she needs some kind of commitment from the city so that the contract can be in place for longer than a year, so that this doesn't have to happen every year. And, you know, as I said earlier, I think that this, you know, the taxpayer is getting a bigger bang for their buck because it's showing partnership between the bid and Auburn to, you know, offset labor costs at the same time getting, getting the work that needs to be done to keep the downtown Auburn looking great. So, I mean, I, instead of it looking at it as like paying more money, in some cases we may be actually saving money because of this. So, you know, as I said, I have support of this. I understand that you need to have some kind of commitment from the city for contract purposes, and that, I think that's why we're talking about it now. So I just wanted to say that it has my personal support, and, you know, and I thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Counselor McCormick.
What can we do right now, though? Because it's, summer will come, believe it or not, and she probably needs commitment, right?
That would be nice. You know, we're past, we're long past me being able to do some of the things now I can do. I'll do what I can. If I don't have some assurance by the end of June, things will look a whole lot different in downtown Auburn. We not only do the flowers, we do a lot of the mowing of all of the downtown parks and weeding, the parks, the malls, State Street and Exchange Street. We do all the mowing of the loop between the sidewalk and the street. If you look at the contract, not right now, but when you have time, I would urge you to please, there's what, four pages here, five? If you would please all look that over, it's a very good description of what we do. And we'll see what happens. I guess I'm wondering, what is going forward? How does this work now? Do we get another opportunity to come back to you? Do we hear what you're going to do before you do it?
Good question.
We'll have open forum on our budget process.
We will have a public hearing before the budget is voted on. We have many, many other areas.
Sure.
There are coworkers here, so I don't think on behalf of the council I can personally give you when your next --
No, I'm just, just, you know, ballpark time.
But there will be a public hearing. We did have a calendar. I don't know, sometime in June. But in the meantime, I would hope, I would ask for council's permission for Mr. Selby to work with you and see how we can get some of these items going that are time-sensitive. So I would ask him to work in regards to that.
Just one last thing.
And then for approval of council to go that way. Counselor?
There is funding through June from the city on this contract.
There is, yes.
And then as we go through our budget deliberations, we'll be able to further look at the whole scenario and try to get through this, you know, all these decisions that need to be made.
Essentially, city council broke the contract by not renewing it for two more years. Essentially, city council broke the contract by not renewing it for two more years. Doug and I work very well together, and I, I would like to say that he is a very valuable city manager here. He reaches out to everyone. And in fact, last week, Doug and Bid and Neil, we worked on a project together, we had it done within about five days, and, and it was a joy to do that. So, Doug and I have been working on this problem for quite a while, and essentially it comes down to council. I mean, Doug doesn't even have a vote in this, it's council's vote, so.
We, we understand that, but we, we rely on Mr. Selby to coordinate everything.
Sure, and he does.
So, we can move along, and, and we're, we're well aware of it.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, so. Is that agreeable, council?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a?
Councilor McCormick.
A clarification about what we're doing. We're to listen with people here, if there's questions, we're kinda squashing the question as, asking part of the?
No.
No, we can absolutely ask questions. Why not? That's part of the process.
So, what was the, we're not supposed to, I don't know, something occurred here a little bit ago, that we're not supposed to ask a lot of questions and debate things.
Hang on, council, I never said that. The only thing is, I think we're, we were getting involved in this budget discussions on how things were gonna be funded and so on and so forth. We, we are gonna get involved in the, in the budget process and have a lot of deliberations on that. I'm just trying to move things along a little bit, 'cause I know there's other people that like to make presentations, but if you have any questions, just ask them. I just think that we're going back and forth for a while.
Oh, I agree.
I think that the difference being is, we're trying to get as much information, but at the same time, I don't know if it's our responsibility at this point to offer solutions, and, and that's the way I look at it.
Well, I understand, I, I didn't wanna, but I know she's, I've spoke with the bid representatives for a couple, over a couple of months about getting this resolved. It's been, that's all, the only reason I pushed on that is for the sake of the downtown businesses.
Understood.
That it seems that downtown just can't seem to get, you know, a little support from the city here, and I wanna see that happen.
And I, I actually wanna back up Councilor McCormick, if we can get this item, you know, moved up, you know, to have some kind of timetable that, that, that is before the general budget, just be, just because, you know, from my perspective, it is money-saving and, and, and from Bid's perspective, it's crucial to the, the success of their operations. So, I don't wanna just, Ms. Riley has contacted us well before the budget proceedings has, have started, and, and was very pressing about this. I really feel that the bid needs us consideration before the, the general budget, just because time, the, the time-sensitive issue of the contract being, being made. So, if, if we could push it up into, into April, or, you know, April, just so that some kind of resolution is brought before, Ms. Councilor McCormick, is that what you're, I mean, it's some, some kind of compromise between June, 'cause June, obviously.
I just want, yeah.
We, we don't know what the budget, we have a, we have a, we have a timetable on our web, on our website. So, so Budget Central has that timetable, and I wanna make sure that that is, it's not like thrown in at the end. I really think we need to address it sooner, sooner than later. So, if, if April we can come to some resolution, and in the meantime, you know, work, you know, work on an individual basis between council to, to advocate for whatever your position is.
And, and one more thing, the bid, maybe it's a good idea that we drag out the history of why we have a bid, where it came from, and what a bid actually is, so that I've, they're used in different ways in different communities depending, but, so that everybody has an idea of why we have a bid downtown and what the, what the purpose and mission of it is.
Mayor, I just, I, I have to disagree with Councilor Cuddy a little bit. I think we have to go through the budget process. It's gonna be a very difficult budget process, as we know, the manager already said, we're gonna be having some shortfalls. We have other organizations that would like just as much funding, I think we have to go through the process, we have to look at every line item, and we have to be, is try to be as equal as we can, whatever thing, I'm not saying no to anybody, but I think it's, it's our responsibility to, to look at the budget as a whole and review every line item possibly. And as I said, unfortunately, if this contract wasn't renewed, it's because we're facing some very difficult times. We don't know what's gonna happen from year to year, and we gotta caution ourselves to make sure we look at every line item, how we spend our money, because we're, we're facing some shortfalls. That's, that's very, very pressing issue, the managers recommend, or told us about that, it's a problem that we're facing. Unfortunately, I wish we had money to spread to everybody, but I think we gotta take our time and make sure we're looking at requests from everybody across the board and maintaining our, looking at maintaining our essential services that people expect and deserve.
Counselor, I, I agree with you, I, I, there are gonna be some difficult cuts for, and I'm sure we're all aware of that, but I wanna give everyone a, a clean slate where to start from. Can't guarantee that we're gonna be able to fund this at this rate, and, and the other committees are here, our employees, our, all of our work areas. I feel we have, I, I understand the urgency, we'll have to look at that, but at the same time, we have to be fair to everyone, and none of us has a favorite cause or committee or, or work area, so. Counselor Cuddy, you're first.
I just wanna actually, within the next few weeks, get Doug's input, if Doug has been working with Connie, I'm sure he's considered the cost-benefit analysis, and I really think that, you know, if Doug recommends this, because it is a money-saving component for the city of Auburn, that I, I think we should move forward sooner than later. If, if there is, you know, question as to whether it's a cost or a benefit, then we can keep it on the, on the table for everything else. But if this is, if this is, if this is money-saving, then we should move forward with it. And another thing, I, you know, just to say, we, we have a new comptroller, we're beginning to shed light on our finances, and I think with that, we're gonna find that we have a, we have a qualified person that's gonna help us through this budget cycle, and I don't think we're gonna have as much of a problem as we have had in the past. So, I'm looking more optimistically in how we're gonna deal with funding the necessary things that need to happen in this city. So, I, I'm, I wanna, I want to make sure that those that are, that have given us a, come before the budget cycle with, with their concerns, that we give them the courtesy of that kind of, that kind of, we give them the courtesy of, of addressing their issue because it is time-sensitive, and they've done the homework, and they've actually reached out to the city staff to come up to some, to come to some conclusion and some, and some remedies, so that this doesn't happen every year.
Councilor Zick.
Yeah, I have to agree with both Councilor Camardo and your point on the, on the, these commissions and, and committees. Each one of them has its level of importance, and each one of them contributes significantly to the city. We have to do, and do the balancing act that each one of these very important committees and commissions and get the share of pie that we feel that we can give to them, and I think, again, to Councilor Camardo's point, I think this needs to be done during the, the budget cycle. You're, you're funded right now till June, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, end of June, the budget is in place, so I think.
That's been my point, but I don't know what you're going to do, which is why I haven't ordered flowers and signed a contract with Auburn Irrigations. One point I'd like to make, that I've noticed over the years, and I've, on several other boards and commissions, I've never, I have not been aware of any other entity that has been cut completely. I know that tourism went from seventy-five thousand down to twenty, and they're dealing with it very well. Each year, it's a struggle, but when you look at bid, I just can't phantom how you would just cut it out completely. If you need to cut, you know, we can discuss that, but, and, and please don't hang a lot of faith in an increased assessment. Bid is a short acronym, but bids are state sanctioned. It was very difficult getting a bid put into place. So, it's not just some little.
Well, I understand.
So, I'm, just don't wanna get lost in the muddle of all of this back and forth, and can we do this, and can we do that?
Well, I understand where you're coming from.
So, I do appreciate everyone's time this morning, and I am available at any time for a special meeting, or I would like some notice. Sometimes it's hard to read that agenda and, and really know what's what on the agenda. I would think a work agenda on the budget would be stated very simply, and the agendas are quite wonderful, Chuck, all the things you send out, with, it's very good. So, just please keep me in the loop, Bid is willing to work with the city, and thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
Mayor, council, just going in alphabetical order, I'd ask civil service.
Good morning, councilors, I'm Mayor Jack Hardy, just representing the Civil Service Commission this morning. All three of us have civil service commissioners, we sat down with Doug, and even though it's a, you know, small part of the budget, we realized that like, there were some very small parts in the budget that we, you know, just basically shared services. We're sharing our secretary with, with Doug's office, that was our biggest concern, because there is a lot of work on, on the secretary, and, but, I mean, as far as our piece of the, the city's pie, the three of us were happy with the way things are, we're not asking for any more or any less. So, is, if the council and everybody's happy with our, I think, what is it, we're probably like, what, a half-page in the entire budget or something? So, but, we're, we're happy if you guys are happy with, you know, okay? We're not looking for anything else, so.
Thank you, Jack.
And just so the, the council knows that, I think the commission's total budget is around sixty-two thousand dollars, about half of that is paid by the school district.
By the school district.
Uh, next up would be historic sites, tourism.
I'm Maxine Alberisi, and I chair the Historic and Cultural Sites Commission, which was established under the direction of Chuck Mason about fifteen years ago. It was his baby to get this all set up so that we could do advertising for all of the sites that none of them can afford to do on their own, and that we could advertise what we have here in Auburn, and we are most excited because we have so many historic sites for such a small city. And we feel that getting the word out and bringing people in helps everybody from all kinds of angles. First of all, if we can't bring people in, we can't keep the doors open, because we get no funding from the county or the city, none of the sites do. There's, at one time, the city historian got paid through the Cuba Museum, she gets nothing. There was a arts and program where you could apply if you were doing something special and get extra money from the city, that's all been cut. And as Connie said, we started out with a seventy-five thousand dollar budget as a commission, and cut it to fifty, and we were there for quite a few years, and then, two years ago, they cut us to forty, and last year to twenty. So, I have with me the only employed, paid person from the commission, which has representatives from all the sites and several appointees that go through the mayor's office on the commission, plus Meg Vanek is on the commission from Tourism Office. But we are not part of the Tourism Office, only in that we promote for the city, we're the only organization that promotes solely for the city and the sites here. And Barb Murdoch is paid, she works in the Tourism Office, but part of her time is paid for by the commission, because she's doing all of our contacts for advertising and all the administrative work that no one else has the time to do, and so she does a great job of that. I think that you all have a projected possible budget for next year, which, and it also gives you our mission vision. We kind of look at your donation as an investment, because the money that gets brought back into the city through the advertising and to the city, to all the restaurants, the hotels, the whole nine yards, everybody benefits from the tourism that comes here, and there's a lot of it. So, if we stop advertising, then tourism goes down, everybody's income goes down, taxes go down, and it's, it's a losing game, and eventually, some of the sites are hanging by threads now, and if we lose the people coming in and paying the fee to go through the sites, we may have to close our doors, and guess who gets the sites? City council then will be in charge. So, Barb is going to give you a little idea of what has happened since, in the cuts of the budget, and like everybody else, we've tried to trim it as much as we can, and hopefully don't have to trim it anymore. And if your new auditor finds some money, it would be well spent to do some more advertising. Barb?
Yes, I would just like to mention some of the things that we have eliminated over the years, and some of them, we won't know the impact until this year, but in the past, we did vast, this is our Historic Sites brochure, if everyone has seen that, and this is a wonderful brochure, and in the past, we've had it all over the state through a distributor that would put it at different gateway centers, on throughways and other places, we've had to eliminate that. We were part of Greater Rochester's Visitors Association, which we had to drop that, so once again, our brochure isn't through Rochester. Life in the Finger Lakes, we had to eliminate some of their publications. We advertised through Merry Ground, we know how many people come from all over and look in the playbill. Scotsman Vacationer, we stopped advertising there, that's certainly all over. WCNY TV and Magazine, we had a presence in there, which we've eliminated. WRVO, we're still with, but we had to eliminate the amount of time we reduce with, we advertise with them. The biggest thing we dropped was the Meredith By, which is our actual advertisement in journals like Ladies' Home Journal, Moore, Better Homes and Gardens, that generated over six, seven thousand inquiries each year, where people would pull out the tier, our tier thing and get a brochure. So, that was a huge, huge impact. TripAdvisor, we all know that, social media, that's the way to go, we had to drop our advertising with TripAdvisor. And in just my time, we did reduce what the Tourism Office was paid for the administrative costs, so we did take a reduction with this last budget. Some of the things that we are doing, just to let you know, and we hope to continue doing with our budget also being in place, we have a website that we get visitors on, of course, and I update that, I put the calendar of events, and everything we do tries to drive people to our website. We still do some brochure distribution, and we hope we can at least keep that, like Gateway on Route eighty-one, that's a very popular place, places like that. We are, we have memberships with Skinny Atlas Chamber, and we also advertise in their brochure, which everybody goes to Skinny Atlas, so I think we get a lot of people coming this way from them. We have to pay fulfillment costs when people do request our brochure, so we had to have money for that. our brochure. So we had to have money for that. We fund a Passport to History program. Where the fourth graders in the county are giving passports and incented to go to all the sites and learn about the sites. In this, pardon? Oh, right, just the city schools, exactly. We are doing, as I said, on WRVO. And another new endeavor we're going to do is on a radio station in Rochester, which is called Saver Life. We're just starting that. We're excited to do that. We have just about enough money to do that. And where the sites, we're picking times where the sites will be interviewed and get our presence on there. Facebook is another thing. We're doing a campaign with a little bit of money. We have, we can input zip codes where we will be advertised through the zip codes. So that's pretty much what we're doing. You know, there's so much more, as Maxine said, that we would like to do. But unfortunately, you know, with our funds cut, this is what we can do at this point. But I'll tell you, when people call the tourism office, when people actually come here, they have no idea what we have until we come here, until they come here. And a lot of the reason they come here is because they see us advertise somewhere. And once they come here, they're hooked and they come back. So does anyone have any questions for us?
Barb, I'm gonna jump in. In regards to your advertising, you've cut your budget considerably, or we have, however you want to say that. Is there a way of tracking what we have lost because of that?
See, unfortunately, advertising isn't always quantifiable. You know, yes, through the Meredith By, you can track how many inquiries are fulfilled. But as far as doing the radio station, as far as doing WRVO, the only thing I can say is that the sites tell us that when people visit, they'll often say they heard us on WRVO, or they heard us through that. But it's nothing, you know, and I've asked the sites, gee, could you keep track? But it's very difficult.
The Meredith By, which was...
Maxine, if you would, please step up to microphone, please.
The Meredith By, which was like half of our budget, we should, we still get some requests because they got their old magazine from the last advertising. But I would say in another year or so, we will see exactly how many people, you know, don't contact us anymore because they're looking, you know, for the brochures from that particular ad. Now, they may ask for it from somewhere else. But we're just kind of, the fallout from that is not hit bottom yet. And...
No. And another thing that I take the time to do is to let, put our events on a lot of different calendars throughout the state. And that's huge. I let all the hotels know so they have an actual paper copy of all the events for the next two weeks. And they love it because they give it to their guests. So it's just a win-win for everybody.
Counselor Cuddy, please.
I just want to, again, state that the Historic Sites Commission is doing work that, you know, needs to happen in Auburn. Auburn needs to advertise what we have here. And to see the cuts, 75 to 50 to 40 to 20, and what you guys are doing with 20, again, I see that if we want Auburn to grow, we want Auburn to continue its trajectory of being a destination, we need to put money into commissions like this. Because what's happening is that there is growth in tourism, almost despite what's happening. Imagine if we began to put money into more advertising to bring people here. I mean, there can be, this complements what's going on with the Musical Theater Festival. And I can only see positives by encouraging council or city support for this commission. I also want to say that I've had conversations with city manager Selby. And, you know, one of my, one of the things that I was saying that Auburn needs within its city, city organization is somebody that, you know, almost like a PR person to promote the city. And I think the Historic Sites Commission is, in a way, doing that. Obviously, it's focusing on our history and one of the aspects of Auburn that does, that is a draw to tourists. But I think this is, again, another example of a supplement where the city has responsibilities to the running of day-to-day business. But commissions like this look out to the future, the growth, the progress that can happen when we put money behind, behind commissions that are, are going to eventually bring back tax revenue and bring people back to Auburn. So I just, I want to just express initial support. And again, obviously, the budget cycle is, we're in the midst of it. And but I just, I want to express my support and really thank you for the work that you're doing on such a bare bones budget. So, you know, thank you. Thank you.
Counselor McCormick.
Thank you.
Your arm's gonna get tired.
I know. I feel like I'm in, back at Holy Family. No, no, it's okay. I wanted to say, one of the things that I think we should do as far as this commission goes, does, is get back to, because I was clerk, once again, I know a little bit more of the history. The Historic Sites Commission would come to council meetings periodically throughout the year and do a report and talk about the things that had been going on, especially a really, it's only $300, but it's a really neat program. It's the passport program within the schools. And I remember when it was introduced, it's a really positive thing to educate kids internally. So they're doing both, both things, but that's very inexpensive. But in order to do it, we're history's hometown. That's what we've adopted as our kind of logo. And to, we need to try to find as much, I know that there's not much to pull from, but I'm going to be committed to try to get a little bit more, if possible. I mean, I'm not sitting here saying it's just 20, good luck, see you later. I really want to see more because without reaching out beyond Cuba County, beyond the Fingerlakes even, we're not going to get the business that we, we need. And it is shortchanging the public. They need to know where we are because we're a great place to live. Thank you.
Well, and part of the philosophy behind the Passport to History program is if the children realize they're here, and I know we have the, you know, the brain drain, the kids will come back. But if they know what's here, they can tell their friends, well, you need to stop in there sometime. And so the education of our own people, and it's amazing the number of people that go through with their fourth graders, and they have either never been to the sites before or not since they were in elementary school. And so the support from our own people is part of that reasoning. And...
That's a great program.
In the past, we did some, some lesson plans for eighth grade and actually for high school to, again, acquaint the kids with the, what's here. And so they don't go away and say, I moved away from Auburn because there's nothing there. And so there's lots here. And I was at a meeting yesterday where somebody moved back here from California and she said, and Auburn rocks. And she came here by choice. So, and there's a lot of those people that are doing that. And so we need to keep selling ourselves. All right? Thank you. And if you have any questions at any time, either Barb or myself.
Thank you.
Be happy to talk to you. And we will be sure we get to more of your meetings.
We'll invite you. That's what I meant. I didn't mean you hadn't come. I meant be invited to come.
Thank you, ladies. Mayor and Council, next would be Human Rights Commission, Mr. Richardson.
Good morning. I'm Fred Richardson, Auburn Human Rights Commission. At the present time, I am the commissioner. And for the last year, because of expenses, I've also done the duties of the executive director. Let me give you a short history of the last five years at Auburn Human Rights Commission. We have gone from full-time executive director to a part-time executive director. And then again, this previous year, we got cut again down to $9,500. You can't do much with $5,900, folks. If you're going to do a job and we really want a commission and human rights office that works, then we have to pay for it. The only thing I'm asking for, I know there are budget cuts, but I'm hopefully and really asking that we do not get cut again this year. If it was not for Westminster Church, if it were not for Cuba Homes for Children, we would not be surviving. I get secretarial work from both places and they are very good to work with. I've given you some information packets on our numbers. On one number, I want you to take, really look at is where it says information. That packet there tells you information doesn't really say everything we do. It may take a phone call and then we have to do a face-to-face interview. From that face-to-face interview, may turn into an investigation. Now, I don't know how many of you has really done investigations. Investigations take a long, long time. So again, I gave you what we do. I didn't give you a budget because 9,500, you had our budget from last year. I'm just asking for the same, if all possible. If we really get cut, I don't know really what we're going to do. We cut two programs in 2013 that were specifically one of my children's program, which I hated to cut. It was a very good program. We worked with about 350 something children. I have one program left working with children. And that's a very good program. The Mirror has been to that Juneteenth program that we do every year. We, in our, some of our other programs, you notice that we cut, we worked, we cut our women's program. We just do not have the money. We do not have an employee anymore. What we do is we contract out. Therefore, we do not have to pay. All the other stuff goes with an employee. Again, I thank you for your attention and I hope that I'll be able to stay the same. Any questions?
Counselor McCormick.
I just wanted to say thank you. I know you've been cut a lot for the last five years. And I, again, from working in the clerk's office, that's usually a first phone call a lot of people make. And we've always been able to refer people for various things from tenant landlord problems to various, I'm sure you know, different issues, to someone that can at least direct them in the right place, if it's not your office, somewhere else. But it's a good, a great service. The need for someone to talk to about different issues that could be a human rights issue is there. And I appreciate you hanging in there, Fred, for all this time with that program.
Thank you for that. Since you brought that up, I will mention one more thing and I'll be short. We do get referrals from the city manager's office, the mayor's office, code enforcement office, police department, and a lot of nonprofit organizations. Thank you for your attention.
Hold on one second. Mr. Cuddy.
Fred, I think you made a great point that all of these departments work with you. And it shows the value of the presence of the Human Rights Commission. And I want to also thank you. So thank you for being committed to human rights in Auburn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Mayor and Council, those are the boards and commissions that were funded in last year's budget. We have many other boards and commissions that serve without any kind of funding. And we just want to recognize those that do. So turn it back over to you if you want to do something.
Do you want to start with our, you want to start with, you folks are welcome to go over your line. There's a lot better things to do on a Saturday morning. Sure, we enjoy your company. But thank you for being with us and thanks for sharing. So.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would you like to start out with the city or do you want to take a break?
Yes, yeah. Counsel, at this time, I entertain a motion for executive session in regards to labor negotiations. Do we have a motion? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy? Would you call the role in regards to executive session? Yeah, yes, we had it also.
Motion for executive session for contract negotiations. Counselor McCormick, Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Aye. We'll be in recess for executive session. He is delayed en route. He'll be here shortly. So. Mr. Selby, want to pick up where we...
Well, Bill's been waiting patiently and he's our last department head. So if, you want to come on up, Bill, and talk about engineering and your budget request?
Do you want me to start without the councilman, Cuddy?
Let's start on a bill. If it's too long, we'll hold, we'll hold you up. All right?
Basically, got a small budget. I don't know, do you want me, a little oversight of what we do or just go right into the budget or what?
Let's just go right into the budget.
Okay.
Biggest, the pluses or minuses in comparison, Bill, if you don't mind.
Sure. Well, I've been there. Yeah, hang on a second. Got the same number of people that I had before. The only thing different there is contractual raises. So that's a nothing. Sick pay, I just put in for the, that's in the contractual, probably won't use it all. So we've got some young guys with families. So I'm sure the kids have been passing their illnesses out to them. So they probably won't be able to get the sick pay incentive. Temporary part-time's flat. Holiday pay is flat. Overtime, I put in for an additional $500. We do a lot of capital projects, as you know, like the Franklin Street Water main. We only had one consultant and we supplemented him with all our people. But the contractors work more hours a day than us. So it's inevitable that we're going to have some overtime. Same thing with the road program, sidewalk programs and all the other programs we do. I just, I'm lucky that I can stay down as low as I am because I do have younger employees. They take a lot of comp time instead of overtime. Furniture and fixtures is flat. Office equipment is, is basically, that item got changed. It looks like it went lower, but it, but I had software into it and that shows up on another line. But between the two items, they're flat. The only thing I've got big, I'm asking for is a vehicle. I haven't bought a vehicle since 2001. I have a one Durango. I usually have, I now only have four vehicles in our fleet. We used to have a six. But we use recycled cop cars for the most part. But the, I only have one vehicle we buy. And that's where we put all our GPS and our survey equipment in. That one's a 2001. I mean, it's, it needs to be replaced. I've had it in the budget for the last couple of years. Hopefully, this year, we'll have a better shot. My other cars can need to be replaced, but we, again, we can use the hand-me-downs or possibly the manager said we might be going into a lease arrangement. But I can still deal with recycled cars for them. But I just need one good vehicle and that's this one here.
Oh, is that a four-wheel drive?
Yes, it is. That's the only one that is. Other equipment is fairly flat. It's less than it was a couple of years ago and it's a little bit more than last year. But in our cars, our, we're getting into more GPS stuff. We're getting into more automated stuff. The guys actually have computers in their car where they do all their field notes and all their quantities. So we can become more efficient with the same group. We buy some GPS equipment, our survey equipment. That's what basically that is. But it's fairly flat. The software is, they're just annual licenses. That's a new section. But their money is exactly the same as basically was included in other items last year. Office supplies, flat. Operating supplies are flat. Telephones is just whatever it is. You know, that's, we have three city-issued cell phones. For three of my guys, two guys use their, our own cellphone, get the monthly statement for that. And the rest is the office phones, our portion. Services are flat. The fees are flat. The training and professional development is flat. The fuel, the fuel, I've increased 1,700 to reflect basically what the fuel's been so far to date for half a year, kind of projected it. That's about what we're spending. I've got no control on what they charge for gas. But we do have a lot of jobs and that's just what we pay for. So basically, I've tried to be lean and mean, basically keeping everything other than contractual raises. The only thing I've got in there basically is the new, new vehicle. Okay?
Bill, you mentioned software. You said it was going to show up on another line.
Yeah, it does. That's that new... Yeah, it does. That's that new, what is it? Is it 409, I think it is?
Point four. Survey software upgrade, or?
Yeah, those, yeah, 409. Those are, we have existing software upgrades. There's a manual fee every year, an annual fee, and that's to pay for these. We're into this ArcGIS and ArcPad, and then the survey software, like the AutoCAD. And that's what we need to keep doing our job up there. Any other questions?
Thanks, Bill. It was worth the wait, wasn't it?
We're almost done. I can go over city manager's office budget briefly. Highlight the changes. Under salaries, that salary number reflects continuation of my voluntary reduction. I did add a full-time secretary position. Have limited hours now, and as everybody knows, I share the civil service secretary. She spends a couple hours in civil service office every day, has an hour off for lunch, and then when she's in, at my office, she's probably spending half her time on civil service items. So, it reduces the amount of time that she has to work on scheduling meetings, preparing correspondence, a number of those things I end up doing. So, it's difficult, to say the least, without somebody there full-time. And if any of you have come by the office at perhaps an odd hour, or during the lunch hour, there's often nobody there. So, we've been putting a sign on the door frequently, saying, "We're sorry, we missed you."
I have a quick question for you. This was your recommendation last year when you did eliminate the secretarial position in your office, and you said you had some other plans other than civil service. Did you investigate those?
The plan was to move a clerk from the treasurer's office, but that clerk ended up taking a transfer to public works, so that plan kind of fell apart. The, it would be possible, if I can maintain Anna there, I think with a part-time position, to drop this budget request down. She and I have spoken, and if we had a part-timer that could fill in, cover the gaps, we could share that person with the corporation council office.
So, a part-time position, maybe to put in codes and share responsibilities. Is that something that could happen, or?
I don't think, I think there's more than enough to do between our two offices for a part-timer, between covering for lunch, vacation days, sick days.
Just trying to look at some different options, so that we possibly could save some, save some savings in those areas, because I know it's going to be very difficult times as we're facing. So, thank you.
Counselor McCormick?
I just wanted to comment that it's kind of hard to share. I think the level of secretary you need would be an executive secretary. I can't believe you've gotten a lot, Anna's doing a great job, but I don't think that you can, it would be great if you could share a clerk with a coach's office, but I don't think an executive secretary.
That's not my point. Anna's the, is taking the responsibility of most of your executive secretary position.
Right, she has.
And you're talking about putting an additional part-time person there. Isn't that what she said?
Well, this, this budget reflects a full-time position at the empty level, but it could be, talking to Anna, it could be a part-time person. And just, you know, her concern about taking a position as a secretary in the non-classified position is that there's no ability to move back should things not work out, or should there be another round of layoffs, so.
And she's also, doesn't she, they used to, civil service cut a position, a part-time position, or it was a less-than-part-time, but she's take, absorbed those duties as well.
She, yeah, she's taken over the secretary, the title secretary, those duties.
Can I just go on the record that Doug, you are the city manager of Auburn, New York? You need, you deserve, a full-time assistant. You know, there's a lot that you have to deal with, and to be answering your own phones, answering the phone, and like dealing with every single detail, just frankly, isn't fair. And I mean, to me, to even be, again, you're introducing this, and I understand that, you know, we're trying to save money, but I think it's another issue where, because we've cut so much in the past, we're not able to do what we need to do. So, much like hiring a comptroller, much like giving the city manager a secretary or an assistant to do the day-to-day business, or to help our city manager do his job, I think is vital. I think is like completely an appropriate request. I, I want to just go on the record to say that this, I, it's essential that this position is created, because it gives Doug the time to do the things that he needs to do as city manager, and not worry about, okay, the morning, there's no one here, I got to put, not, I mean, it's just, it's, it just doesn't seem like that's the kind of image I would like to project, especially if there's people trying to contact the city manager. It's, you know, to have an assistant, that's like standard operating procedure. And I completely support this position, and I hope that it stays in the budget.
I just want the record to reflect, though, counselor, that the council did not cut this position out of the budget last year. This was a recommendation from the manager. So, I just want people to realize that, that.
And I'm going to weigh in, please, as I want everyone to. I'm in total agreement with you. At the same time, I agree, and that was the manager's choice. I think he, I think in the spirit of things, the way it was going, he was trying to help the city, which he has done immensely. But, you know, Doug's office, as well as my office, they have many visitors in there, and if it's, nothing against Anna, she's a great lady. I wish we had 20 more like her. But if it's a constant turnover, it doesn't send a clear-cut message that we are a professional organization, and we do what's best for everyone. So, I have to agree with Counselor Cuddy, and Counselor Camardo, I'm also somewhat agreeing with you, but I think he's tried it, and he's asking for it, he's not.
I just don't want the wrong impression out there that.
No.
Right. The other changes, I put a line in there for employee incentives of $1,000. I'd like to start, you know, recognizing employees when they retire, or they reach anniversary date, or they achieve something. So, this is just a small amount of money for certificates, and maybe a plaque, or take them to lunch.
What line are you putting that in, Doug? I'm sorry.
Four, four, five.
Under miscellaneous business.
Four, four, five.
Four, four, five.
Thank you. And then the other items, just to highlight, most of them are in my current employment contract with, related to training professional development, and, let's see. The telephone, we'll probably move one of those, the office phone landlines, move that to central services as we finalize the budget. But the other one is cellphone, which is in my contract, and there's some, some of the fees for memberships are in my contract. Other than that, that's, that's pretty much my budget. I've done a few things, tried to save money. I went to ICMA's conference in Boston. I didn't claim travel for that. Went to NICOM in Albany. I didn't claim travel or lodging for that. I do want to say one other thing that's not in my budget, generally for the executive staff, the management staff. Their pay and benefits, and in terms of longevity, things like that, and step increase have been frozen for over three years now. In 2013, 14 budget year, there was a pay cut of 4% on all of those employees. So, a freeze plus a pay cut. And in the meantime, their subordinates have all received step increases, because they're in representative bargaining units. They've received their longevity increases, and they've also received about 6% in base wage increases. So, the employees that are beneath the level of management, who are in bargaining units, have seen regular wage increases. What I'd like to do is not to go wild with this, but restore the longevity for the management employees. Give step increases next year for those who are eligible, and specifically their Chief Nagel, Chief Deigert, Mike Talbot, and Vicky Murphy, which happen also to be 40-hour employees. They have more hours in their daily schedule than those of us who work in City Hall. And also allow for adjustments for Christina Selvik, who's in the management unit, and.
There's only like eight people altogether, and they really work, dedicated employees to the city, and I would, this year, support that they are recognized.
I have some questions on your budget, Mayor, if I could just. Vehicle expense dug into 482, you get $3,500, $3,600, excuse me. What's that for?
That's my car allowance.
Oh, that goes into that account for your, because of the contract we have.
Yeah, I should have pointed that out, yes.
Okay. That's all. I just, I didn't know you had, I don't think that was in there last year. I think that might have been in a different spot.
Well, this is part of what Laura's been having us do, is to try to get things in the proper categories now. I think it was under miscellaneous business expenses before.
I don't understand why it would have gone into vehicle expense, because there is no vehicle expense. That's part of a contract that you have with the city.
Well, I took the effort to break it out, so everybody understood that. I could have put it under contract, and then it would have looked like a big number in combination with the other things.
I'd rather have it broken out, so we know. It's more work, but at least we know. I agree in the way you did it, and Laura, I should do it, so.
The last budget is for the mayor and city council. And Mayor Quillan and I sat up with Bob Gauthier. Laura wasn't here at the time we put this together, but I'll just run through it. You all are part-time, including the secretary, and so your salaries all showed up under part-time. That was left the same. We did have to restore some money, because as you recall, Counselor Smith declined to take his stipend the last year. There's numbers in here for office supplies, operating supplies, largely the same as they were, well, exactly the same as they were in last budget. Under services, that's a $5,000 line item. The historian, which was mentioned in an earlier presentation, is paid for out of that. Miscellaneous business expenses is $100, but that's minor things. Again, some proclamations, keys to the city, things of that sort. City manager search is blank. Hope it can stay that way.
Did you say the city manager is blank, or?
The search, the special line here for the search. Special projects was 3,500 in discussing that. We're proposing $1,500. Professional development and training is opportunities to cover costs associated with going to things like NICOM. That was $1,500. We discussed that, and proposing about $3,000. The reason being, the NICOM conferences, just in round numbers, are about $600 each, and miscellaneous other things that council may want to attend would easily top $3,000. And that's basically it for the mayor and council.
Well, Doug, I don't take the city health insurance. Is this number reflected in this budget? Because I declined the, the health insurance. I did that when I took office. I said I didn't want it, because I have a better one at work, and I don't need to burden a taxpayer with an additional.
I'll double check.
But I would like to know, is, that number should not be in there.
Which line are you looking at?
It would be health insurance, 841.
Thank you.
But there, there may be some counselors that do have health insurance. Is that, is that?
No, this is, that was my personal choice.
Oh, it's, so this is all?
Yes. I want to make sure that my, any, that my, anything that would have been associated to my having health insurance, which doesn't happen, is reflected here.
You don't want us to be paying for a dead horse?
Well, I'm not paying, I'm not taking it. I'm not using it. I don't have a card. We can't have the number for not, it's not being used.
That's what I'm saying. Counselor?
Along the same lines of the city manager's secretary, the need for it, the city manager's secretary and the mayor's secretary are, do more, a lot more than, serve a better, bigger purpose than just the typical, you know, secretarial support type of functions. Since the mayor's secretary was made part-time, there's been about a gap for service to the community, not necessarily your needs as far as support for, as a secretary would, but the phones ringing, people stop in all the time to see the city council or the mayor, and the door is shut. And that means, the people that stop in are either, a lot of times, it's seniors, senior citizens, citizens in general. It's business, people of the business community, and they just stop in and want to see someone. And while the mayor or any of us, the city council, aren't there 27 days, five days a week, the person that sits in that desk is a person that they can see and talk to, and know that the city is there, and can coordinate getting response to you, or us, or the department heads that need to take care of whatever it is. And I've noticed it since the position was left to part-time. They would then go to the city clerk's office for help, and we'd try, and anybody in the city hall would help them. But I really think, if possible, if there's any way to just consider a full-time position, and that's not to say the mayor and the city counselors need a secretary. It's to say that the city of Auburn's mayor's office needs to have someone there, the hours the city hall is open, for visitors. I can, I can tell you quite a few times, just people that go to the Seward Mansion, or specifically the Seward Mansion, will come across the street and want to meet the mayor. And he may or may not be there, but in the afternoon, if the mayor's, when he is here, he leaves the door open, so that the office is open. But if the door is shut, it's just a bad, gives a bad message. And I think if we could find a way to make that more of a function, it really did serve a lot of different, my street isn't plowed, my potholes, my, they did a lot of that coordinating from that office, as does the city manager's office. And it's a service to the community, I think. Not to us as much. That's my two cents.
We'll have an opportunity to bring our suggestions in front of council, so I think that, you know, if that's the way you feel, you can make that suggestion at that time, or that request at that time.
I'm not sure if I'm on board with it or not, counsel. I see, I realize, but at the same time, I see both sides of the coin. I agree with both sides, but.
Yeah, I know. It's not a burning fire, no pun intended, but.
We'll have our opportunity, as you say, to make.
When is that? What, is there going to be a day set aside for that?
There's a website now. You can click, and there's a calendar. It tells you when, when it's to be done. So, I don't have the paperwork.
I've looked at that. It doesn't specifically say council brings their ideas.
It does, May 15.
May 15?
That's the clerk. Thank you.
After we get the proposed budget from the manager.
After we get the proposed budget.
After May 15, they'll, there'll be, what you decided last week was that after May 15, that would require a majority of council to bring a proposal forward.
So, if I bring something up, like I want to see us have lunch, hot lunches every day here, and the people at that table, the counselors, are in favor of it, it's a go. The three of us.
If you have three votes.
Majority, majority.
A minimum of three votes.
Okay, great. Hot lunches.
Counselors, I believe we're done with the budget, unless Mr. Solly has anything else to say. The only thing we've got to jump back to is we have a resolution in front of us for a meeting next Saturday. Now, I understand that there's a conflict with one of our council members. Debbie, Counselor McCormick, you had the, you had the conflict. What, what would your remedy be to help us out here? And it's important that all four, all five, excuse me, be at this meeting next week.
I agree. Well, I can be available from, if you want to start at nine, I could be available till just about 10:30, and then I can be available after 12. I just have that one gap in there that I can't.
I guess we got to bring this on the floor and then amend it.
And Mr. Rossi was going to, I don't know if he's made the appointments, but if he knew that, and want, I don't know if that's possible, if it's good for council. I just wanted to. wanted to make everyone aware of that. I don't want to throw a wrench in things, but I am.
Mr. Fusco, shall we bring this on the board, and then, on the floor, and then try to amend it?
Yeah, that would be the way to do it. Let's get a motion in a second, and?
I'll make a motion.
Unless you want to talk about a time that you think, for example, does everybody kind of happy with noon, or do you want to start at eight, or?
I'll make a motion, let's get it on?
Let's get on the floor. Motion to, to bring to the floor Council Resolution Number 53 by Counsel Camardo, and seconded by Counsel McCormick. So, now, would it be agreeable to everyone else to meet at eight?
That's fine.
Eight?
Eight in the morning, I don't say anymore.
At eight?
Yes, at eight, and then we will, we'll try to finish our business prior to your leaving.
Sure.
And then if we have to reconvene or something, we can always go into a recess and come back, if necessary.
Depending on how the appointments go, gotcha, okay.
Okay. So, at this time, I'll make a motion to change the start time from 9:00 AM to 8:00 AM. Do I have a second, Counsel Camardo? So, we could take a vote on the amendment, please?
Sure. Motion to amend the start time to 8:00 AM. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resica?
Yes.
Aye. Further discussion?
I'll read it.
Please read it.
Yeah, we've got to?
We overlook you, Counsel.
Okay. Whereas the Auburn City Council pursuant to its rules and procedures meets on Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM, and whereas the Auburn City Council rules and procedures provides that a special meeting may be held at any time upon at least two days' notice, upon unanimous consent of the Council, and whereas the Auburn City Council desires to convene a special meeting to be held on March 29, 2014, at 8:00 AM, at the Council Chambers at Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street, Auburn, New York, to consider the appointment of personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council shall convene a special meeting on Saturday, March 29, 2014, at 8:00 AM, at Council Chambers at Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street, to consider the appointment of personnel, and be it further resolved, City Clerk is hereby directed to notify the media and general public of the special meeting time, day, date, and location pursuant to the tenet of this resolution.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resica?
Yes.
Aye. Counsel, under other business, anyone? Do we have requests for executive session? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Counsel McCormick, I was going to call McCarthy. Counsel Camardo?
Oh, it's a Mick.
We've got two Cs on this side of the dial, so please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resica?
Yes.
Aye, we're adjourned. It's going to be a lot of fun at 8 o'clock next week.